Audit.
Second.
Role call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Delora?
Yes.
Next, I move to approve a B.C., that stands for Blanket, Blanket Certificate, which is an approval of a payment in the amount of $3,300 from Fund Line 1,001,10-319 for IT expenses to go through the remainder of 2022.
Second. Yeah, second, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, no, I don't know.
Role call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Delora?
Yes.
Next, I move to approve the purchase of the Single Node Scale. He promised not to use that word anymore.
It's the brand name.
But Single Server, it would be an update in our IT server from the Chi Corporation in the amount of $14,709 to be taken from Fund Line 1,000-110-319.
Second.
Role call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Delora?
Yes.
Mr. Delora, you have a couple of matters for us to consider.
Yes, I move to approve the reallocation of appropriation of funds per the attachment label Exhibit A for proper documentation of expenditures.
Second.
Role call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Delora?
Yes. I move to approve the proposal for Charles E. Harrison Associates to be awarded the audit contract in order to handle our state audit requirements through December 31st, 2026.
I would second that.
Role call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Delora?
Yes. I move to accept the resignation of full-time firefighter, paramedic Mike Marius, effective September 29th, 2022. Mike has accepted a full-time firefighter, paramedic position with the Copley Township Fire Department. In this letter of resignation, Mike expressed his gratitude to the department for the experience, training, friends, and memories, and appreciates the opportunity to serve the residents of Springfield Township.
Second.
And we would express our thanks to Mike for the years of service he provided to us.
Role call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Delora?
Yes. And I move to approve the hiring of Brittany Jemmin to the position of part-time firefighter, EMT, paramedic, effective October 10th, 2022, and where the probationary period in terms of employment will follow the Springfield Township Part-Time Firefighters Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second.
Role call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Delora?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman, you have a couple of matters.
I move to grant Alan Swift, zoning administrator, authority to sign land bank forms for reimbursement of funds for demolition of 981 Seneca Trail.
I would second that. We have a couple of structures in the Surrywood area that we intend to demolish to lower some density of that area. We hope to accomplish that yet this month.
Before next week, by next week.
By next week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, and that's one of them, 981. And the other one is 997 Utica, I think. Okay.
Role call, Mrs. Chapman?
The second.
I seconded it.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Delora?
Yes.
I move to declare the property located at 529 James Avenue, Parcel 51-03655, a nuisance, and initiate abatement under the provisions of Ohio Revised Code, Section 50587, Trash and Debris.
Second.
Role call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Delora?
Yes.
And you'll have, Mr. Robinson advises, just confirmed by email, when we get the property owner's acknowledgement, as had been done previously before the board.
Yes.
Okay. We have a couple of announcements before we get into some business that takes us into executive session. Chief, you may have some announcements you want to make. And before you do that, you know, I want to thank you for your leadership and hard work putting together the car show on Saturday.
I'm gonna move this over here. I thought somebody was gonna speak before me, so.
Have a seat.
Okay.
You're okay? All right, okay. All right. He's got a gun.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that you had a timeline. And I had a lot of questions for you.
Oh, okay. Your time's running short.
Your time is shorter.
I wanted an opportunity to do a presentation tonight. First of all, so you know, we do have a K-9 program. Sean Brady's here with his K-9 Brody. They started that program, how many years ago now, Sean? You had the K-9 program, three years ago. The program is such an asset to our community. Sean is busy with his K-9. He works afternoon shift. He makes several narcotics arrests every year. He's always available for public appearances. He's available for security reasons with the K-9. The K-9 goes home with Sean, so it's a full-time job for him. The K-9 is mostly all funded by donations. So throughout the year, we try to do some fundraising efforts to raise money for the K-9. The trustees are asking that we do more with this lakefront. We have such a nice lakefront here, we're trying to use it for more programs. So they wanted to do a car show this year, so we took advantage of that. We thought, well, we'll do a car show. We'll also use that as a fundraiser, help fund some of the stuff that Sean's doing with his K-9. The K-9 is expensive throughout the year, whether it's vets, bills, whether it's a sleeve, it's training, it's food for Brody. So this helps us to kind of cover some of those expenses, and they don't need to come out of the police budget. Most of the K-9 costs are fundraised and are donated. So the K-9, we did a K-9 program, or K-9 in cars, we called it this year. A good friend of mine, Lynn Smith, who I'm gonna have him up here in just a second, I partnered with him. We've been working on this several months. So we had the car show last Sunday. Like I said, the funds that we raised for the K-9 program go to pay for Brody throughout the year. We had, food vendors came out, we had some raffle prizes, Kelly Chapman, my wife Melissa, and some other folks up till 10 o'clock one night putting gift baskets together. So it was really a group effort to put this event on. So we had our show on Sunday. We ran it all day long. We had about 130 cars came in. We did charge, we did have a donation for cars that came. At the end of the day, we raised over $5,000 for our K-9 program. The K-9 also fundraised for his cruiser. We got Sean a Tahoe, which we leased through Enterprise. They raised $10,000 a year to pay for that cruiser, so it's another expense that doesn't come out of my budget. One of the unique things is I brought in a friend of mine, Lynn Smith. Lynn's a forensic mechanic. He has an associate and his partner who brought in some really unique cars that we hope would bring more folks in. Some of the cars that Lynn brought into our show, you're not going to see anywhere else. Lynn's gonna give us a brief description, right, of these cars as I go through these first four cars. So the Bugazi's first. So can you tell them briefly about the Bugazi? You can come up here if you want.
I noticed he said briefly.
Briefly.
He's silent. Thank you. And it was really nice that you let us play. Over the years, you get involved in things like this. This had a really nice feel, being a community event. And the team, Ms. Chapman, and a couple of people from your department, really made it what it was. And I was kind of proud to be part of it. Thank you. You keep those standards low, and I'm your guy. This particular car, if you care, and at least look like you do, the, this was a George Barris, the king of customizers after the war. He did Batmobile and the Dukes of Hazzard. And he did a lot of things for the entertainment market in California, and pretty renowned. So for you guys to have two George Barris cars at a kind of a neighborhood event is kind of noteworthy. But this Bugazi is built on a 1972 Lincoln Continental. And it was, they made 14 of them, and this was the prototype. This was number one of 14. All the pinstriping is gold. The interior pieces, they actually went and bought Persian rugs to put the interior in. And it's kind of over the top, but it gets attention. In certain neighborhoods, it wouldn't last very long. But anyhow, and this is a Davis. They were only made in 1948. It is all aluminum. It is, they made 16, and they can account for all of them. And 15 survived. Mr. Davis, somewhat like Mr. Tucker of that fame that they made a movie about, also went to jail. He got kind of rambunctious with investors' money and off to jail it went. Somebody didn't like it. One of the provisions of getting out of jail was you could not do any work in the automotive field. So he went into the carnival business. And if you look at it for a bit, you're gonna know what he made in the carnival world. I'm not gonna let you do this anymore if you keep jumping around. Back to the Davis. I'm used to working with, he sent out an email on my car that's coming up, and it's a Roadster that he referred to as a rooster. And so you have to be careful who you let do your press work. Anyhow, this, can anybody see what you think they made? He did? Take a guess.
Well, Mr. Delora told me bumper cars.
Bingo.
Give him that credit.
Oh, well, you know, I steal ideas, you know? I would take the claim. But yes, he made bumper cars, and it really looks like a big one. But it's kind of unique just being that it's one of 16. All right, good job. The, this is another Barris custom, good old George. They bought a new 1958 Corvette. And through 1959, they had customized this car for a customer. And so it has some claim, it's quite a distraction, isn't it? But anyhow, if you just wait there. The, but it's kind of novel that it is both a Barris in 1958 and was kind of famous in the custom car and car show world. And it's part of our collection. Okay. This is, and if you look closely, you'll see abject fear on my face, and my eyes are closed tightly. But that car was here, it's a, it was built back in 1968. They're never done. But it was a 1923 Model T Ford Roadster that was always a drag racing car. And you probably all know, but last Thursday was the, makes you feel old, was the 49-year anniversary of me and it winning the All-American Nationals in Bristol, Tennessee. Everything went well that day, and it's my only claim to fame. But those were the cars that we were able to bring along and attract a little attention. Any questions at all? Do you want to just get Simone and me out of your hair?
No, we thank you for your participation. It added a real interest, I think, to the, to the car show. And if we ask you to be involved again, can we count on you?
I can, that's very nice. You are, what is your field?
Attorney.
Promotion? Oh, whatever. I'm a mechanic who works with attorneys.
Okay.
Most of the world thinks one light and bolt would solve two problems.
So you're the.
You can joke like that. But yes, it was a compliment that you asked. And like I said, if you keep your standards low, I can usually rise to the occasion.
Okay, good.
Thank you. And thanks again for letting me participate.
Thank you.
As a compliment.
Thank you so much.
It's all yours.
I'll say this. Several months ago, I reached out to Lynn about this car show. He has put countless hours, we've had numerous meetings. He's made himself very available to us so we can raise money for the K-9 program. So you really did a great job, Lynn. I know you bust my chops all the time, but you did a great job. So we also had the Green Monster, which was built here on Pickle Road in Springfield Township. This was a nice addition as well. The Daughter was here all day and answering questions for folks. That was great that they, you know, let us borrow that car for the day. I had just several pictures, I'll go through them rather quickly, of just photos from our event on Sunday.
Did you see?
I saw it, yeah.
Did you have it?
Mr. Young working.
Yeah.
Like I said, we had probably over 130 cars, which made it a nice event on this lakefront. We had several vendors that participated. We had food vendors that came to our event. We had a few police departments came, which I'll recognize them. Soma Police came, Stowe Police came, the House State Patrol came. They all brought their Canines. Couple more photos for you. I made a list of the folks that I want to recognize. Hope I didn't miss anybody. We had several of our township employees volunteer their time to be here on Sunday to work on this event. The road department guys were great. They helped us. They were here all day long for whatever we needed them to do. So I wanted to recognize those folks. Several volunteers made this event happen. Most all these folks were here on Sunday helping us coordinate the event, parking cars, handing out flyers, selling raffle tickets, selling 50/50 tickets. I listed the four police agencies that came to support our program. We had some folks that donated. I thought, I made a great donation to our event, so I listed their names on here. Along with these folks, Akron Coach picked up the cars from Mr. Smith's garage, brought them up here, made two trips each. Trust me, I was extremely nervous while they were here. Picked them up, gotten them back. The cars were fine, right, Lynn? Van de Veer, they brought new vehicles, parked them on the lakefront for us. Obviously, Smith and Company. Lynn was here with his wife Bobby, helping us. And Zombie Johns, Mike is here from Zombie Johns. That was a great addition to our event. Lynn reached out to Zombie Johns, which is over here on Kent Road. They provided a side-by-side for the day and drove people to their parking spots. A lot of seniors came to the event. It was nice that Zombie Johns provided that transport for them to get from the parking to our event. So really appreciate that. So I think Lynn's in for next year. I think the board will approve it, so I think we're gonna do one next year, right, Lynn? I do want to recognize, Mike, if you can come up here, please. We have a certificate for you for your participation with this event. Thank you very much.
Really good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Did I have one for Lynn? You come up, please. And Bobby, come up? Yep, I have one for you. You were all the maidens. She was here. Every time Lynn came to help, Bobby was there with her, with them. Thank you very much. You got one for me?
Should I get my phone?
Yeah. Again, on behalf of the township, the board of trustees, we just appreciate all the participation to make this event as successful as it was. So thank you. Thank you, Sean, for stopping by.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I think we have another guest here with us. Steve, Steve Demitrio, is that, have I stated that correctly? Okay.
That's me. I'm a third person.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Trustees, thanks for having me. My name's Steve Demitrio. I'm running for the Ohio House of Representatives in the newly formed District 35, which is parts of Georgia County, where I live, Portage County, and Summit County, so including Springfield Township. So that's why I'm here tonight. Unfortunately, I don't have any cool cars or dogs or certificates, so you're just gonna have to bear with me as you listen to a wannabe politician explain who he is and why he's here. So, but seriously, great to be here. And I have to say, this is probably one of the most well-attended township trustee meetings I've been to over the last few months. I've been to quite a few.
And one of the best run, right?
I was just about to get there, trustee, but no. So just a little bit about me and why I'm here. You know, I grew up in Georgia County. After high school, I went to the United States Military Academy at West Point and served five years as a platoon leader, Army Ranger, deployed to Afghanistan, and then started a small business. And you know, that's one of the reasons I'm running. It's my first camp, political campaign. And honestly, I just kind of got frustrated, like, you know, I'm sure some reasons why you're here tonight, or you ran for office as well for the trustees and elected officials here. But just got frustrated and wanted to see some change as a business owner, and especially as a new dad now. I have a beautiful wife, Carly, and two little boys, a one-year-old and a one-month-old. So it's pretty crazy, the Demitrio household right now, but it's good crazy. Unfortunately, probably won't be able to stay the whole meeting because I gotta get home to help my wife as we adjust to man-to-man defense at home. But you know, I've been coming, or trying to come to all the township, village, and city council or trustee meetings throughout the district. So there's a lot of them. We've, we've made our way through quite a bit. It's my campaign manager, Isaac, in the back, but he helps keep me on schedule. But I'm here because I know the important work gets done at the most local level, which typically is at the township level. In my district, it's a pretty rural district, so we have a lot of townships. But you know, I appreciate, especially as a first-time candidate, learning more about our political system, the work that y'all do here. And it, and really, it's the work that positively affects our lives day to day. And that's the stuff I care about. That's why I'm running. I want to make our lives better in Ohio, my life better, my family's life's better, and the lives of families in our district better. So I want to be an ally for not only, you know, the township leaders, but also all of you in the room tonight. And I just want to be an advocate, the guy that can go down and get things done for you in Columbus, or just the guy that can help answer a question if it's, you know, I've heard it all from, as I'm sure you do, from, hey, I don't have any cellphone service. I thought there was like a big line item in the budget for high-speed internet and more cellphone coverage in Ohio. And just putting folks in touch with the right people down at our state capitol. And that, that's it. I just want to be a servant leader on behalf of our district. And I'd like to, you know, build this relationship over time. And hopefully, you don't just see me here during election season. I'd like to make this regular and come to meetings and share information and receive information to take back down to Columbus. That's as simple as that. So I, you can go to my website, steveforohiohouse.com, if you want to get involved in the campaign or just learn more about me. We also have the district up there if you want to learn, see your new state house district. It's been kind of confusing with redistricting. We're gonna go through redistricting again in two years. So congressional, all the way to state legislative districts will be different again. Well, hopefully not too different, but we'll see what happens. But anyway, just glad to be here. I'd love to, you know, maybe stay for a couple of questions if that's helpful. If not, happy to go sit down again. But, and I got some card, business cards. Unfortunately, I guess we're running short. I'll just blame my campaign manager for the staff, who of course, I don't ever make any mistakes. But go to our website, and we have all our contact info up there. And be glad to sit down with you if you want to catch up on anything one-on-one, so.
You know, Steve, I appreciate your comment. And one of the concerns that I have as a citizen in the, the district that, that we've been put in now goes all the way from Georgia County?
Yeah.
And down through, and how far south does it go? Are we the furthest south?
I mean, we're, we're almost there, I'd say. But you know, down in Portage County, if you know, like Deerfield Township, or Atwater Township, the kind of southern ship of Portage, looks like a backward sea.
I mean, the difficulty, that's one of the problems that I have with, with our state legislature. And, and it is controlled by one party, the Republican Party.
Sure.
And a, our Supreme Court, led by Maureen O'Connor, who by the way, is a Republican, a fine woman. I, when I started practicing, she was a magistrate in the probate court. And she says that there's a failure on the part of our controlling party to agree to districts that are really competitive. And I wonder how it is that we end up in a district that starts in Georgia and ends up in Portage.
It's a great question. For me, you know, again, as a, just a regular citizen who happens to be running during a pretty crazy redistricting process, I dealt with, you know, kind of the uncertainty and unknowns just as much as, you know, the everyday voter. And you know, the district I'm running in has changed five times. I think we had five versions of the map for the state legislative races. So trust me, I was right there with you as far as mixed feelings of frustration, uncertainty, especially considering, you know, I've been spending a lot of time and effort, time away from my family, money on, on this endeavor. So yeah, it was, you know, I'm not sure. I can answer your question, but all I can tell you is, I think having the servant leader mindset and, you know, the mindset of just wanting to get things done, you know, politicking is always gonna happen, and politicians are gonna do politician things, which I think you see, whether it's the Democrats or the Republicans, you definitely saw that the last few months in Ohio. And then unfortunately, some other outside factors like special interest groups and stuff, you know, with lawsuits. And it was a big mess. And hopefully, we have, I'll say this, we have a lot of, you know, I've met a lot of, at least the Republican hopeful freshmen coming in, and they're great people, just everyday people like you and I, that, you know, a lot of them, first-time candidates that just want to go down there and do good things. So hopefully, that can help alleviate some of, some of the frustration I think you've, you and I have shared, so.
Yeah, the other issue that has always concerned me as a local official is the, the dramatic reduction that the legislature has visited on local government funding. And the result of it has been to put us in the position of constantly asking voters to increase their real estate taxes. And that, that pushes the burden on to seniors primarily.
Right.
And it's, it's been a serious matter. I would hope that you give consideration
Yeah.
to the needs of the local government.
Real, that 100%. I mean, I talked about, you know, basically two issues, schools and taxes. You know, I try not to promise the world, you know, those are pretty important issues, but those are the things that I'm passionate about, especially, you know, business owner's dad, kind of, and I think there's a lot of intersection there. And you nailed it, I, especially at the township level. Yeah, the real estate taxes kind of fund all of the above. Yeah, the real estate taxes kind of fund all of the above in our, you know, at least in Ohio, so y'all are the subject matter experts on that, and, you know, I've learned a lot over the last year, so 100, I mean, that's why I'm here, that's why, you know, especially if I win in November, I want to be here, and hopefully outside of meetings, we can sit down and, you know, you can help me learn about, you know, some of the issues you're facing, because.
If you win in November, we're gonna invite you back and.
All right, well, great, awesome.
And we'll, we'll go over these issues?
No, I welcome that and I look forward to it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, everyone. Thanks for having me.
I think I have one.
Oh, did he? That's mine.
Oh, oh, that's hers.
Thanks so much, nice to meet you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Anytime.
Do we have anybody else that cares to speak to us? If not, I'm gonna, oh, you have announcements.
I have announcements. First, it's that time of year again, you know, cleaning up the yard, the leaves and branches, so Woodland Mulch is taking yard waste. It's a voucher program, you have to stop in here first and get a voucher, and then you can drop off your yard waste there at Woodland Mulch, free of charge. So if you'd like a voucher, come during our normal operating hours and pick one up, and you can dispose of your yard waste. I was told there are no stumps, but sticks and so forth, you can drop off, I guess. Just take something, they'll tell you whether or not they'll take it or not, yes.
So they just need to present, present some proof they're a Springfield Township trustee or resident?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And they get a voucher?
And you'll get a voucher.
Okay.
And what everyone's been waiting for, Spectrum Channel 1023, your Spectrum Community Channel, serves the communities of Springfield and Lake More. You can tune into Channel 1023 and find the days and times of programs. You can find, also find the information on our website, www.springfultownship.us. Currently, they're running two of our Friday night concerts, The Fabulous Voices and The Lee's Brothers, and also the community governing meetings, so the school board, our trustee meeting, and the village council meetings. Don't forget to follow them on Facebook, Channel 1023 on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and they also have a blog, and I don't think they have Snapchat or MySpace or anything, but the rest of them they do have, so if there's anything you'd like to see, just get in touch with channel, with us here, send us an email, or get in touch with them on the Instagram or Facebook, and let them know of an event, and they will be happy to cover it. So right now, the Springfield Board of Education meeting from August 16th, Lake More Council meeting from September 6th, The Lee's Brother Band and The Fabulous Voices concert, as well as the Springfield Township trustee meeting from August 18th. And that is it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, if not, I'm gonna move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss the subject of a potential purchase of property. Thank you all for attending.
Second.
We don't anticipate a motion afterwards, so, thank you.